That's right. Our Godfather, we thank you for this another day of life and thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We ask that you now be with us, be with us in this meeting, made everything we say and do here today be pleasing and acceptable on your side and be what's best for the will of the city. First, in Christ's name, I pray.
Praise to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to the, uh, 22th city council meeting, January 21st. First item on the agenda is approved minutes from January 7th, 2020 meeting. If nobody's got any comments or questions on how the minutes were written, I need to ask for motion to approve those minutes.
All in favor?
The next item on the agenda is resolution number 1233, the census that we discussed last week. If nobody has any questions to make on behalf of that census resolution, I need to ask for motion to accept that, pass that resolution. I'd like to say all in favor. Let me put forward our next item on that census. I know they're hard and pretty hard and, um, that was coming from Aho for a little while today. He, uh, re- innovated again. How important it is that we try to get the census done. They do it every 10 years and he said that he, the best knowledge that he has seen that Marion County, the state of Alabama was not the lowest, one of the lowest participants in 2010. He said he better believe that that would cause there's no threat for any reason, but there's, you know, there's a chance that then they lose a congressional seat this time if we don't get our census filled out and that, that will affect our tax dollars that come back down this way if we lose a congressional seat in, in Washington. So, I need to try to explain to everybody the importance of doing the census is to, when we can maintain the voices that we've got up there. So I'm going to go on to the next item on the agenda is 2015 fight on a purchase, purchase finance and we, we, the council agreed last week to purchase a, the garbage truck involved, but we did not discuss financing. Now, I need to, we've covered it for right now, but we've done it out of general fund. I need to ask the council if they would let us go to a local bank and get financing and set it up in the same amount of paperwork on the other truck.
No?
All in favor? The next item on the agenda is old business. Let's talk around the table, if any, CP and the council's got any old business that they want to, uh, bring up and discuss.
Hey, I had someone ask me about, uh, the ride that we had this weekend. It brought my attention that one of our local firemen, firefighter, he's one, he got that up and I think you wrote in it and I think, uh, I think he said, um, probably around 600 vehicles.
200 plus.
$47,000 raised for the spam thing. I'd just like to commend, uh, Mr. Spanish Smith for, you know, getting that up in a short time there to help that family because I have had, you know, several people ask who got it and I had some tell me that he got it, so I just have to give him some recognition on being able to help the family.
Yeah, I know he's a big, very big voice in it. Of course, I don't do Facebook and I know that's how a lot of it spread and got people, you know, but I have heard that he, he made several contacts for me throughout the process of setting it up. Uh, I do know he had, he was a very big voice in making it happen. That was a good thing. His wisdom can live, see. Yeah, that shows a lot for the community for sure.
Yeah.
Show the support that fans it is. I know it's been a long way, uh, the trouble that the young man had, you know, four years he's here. But, uh, if you want to, we might try to do something later and others and recognize it if you want to, we might try to put something together as a body for the city recognizing the support that they showed and by doing that, raising the money.
Have we heard anything about the houses that we was having some trouble about?
No, we've, we've got the ordinance, we've got that ordinance finalized, done with dibbit off, we've been voting to finalize, we've got our ordinance and we've got copies of the orders to all of our, uh, to all the members of that, uh, board that we formed a re-up to gain the board that we had, that I think all the members have got a copy of. Actually, I spoke with one of the board members, uh, last week and I spoke with another one actually today at the meeting that we had over here. C3 had across the road earlier today, I had to make one of the members and, uh, we supposed to have a, we supposed to have a meeting with all of them together, go over the cans and canes and what we need to do and I've already advised them. I'm in contact with MACOG, there's a grant out there. I've already advised the, that board to start getting, uh, I guess going around, pretty much looking and getting an idea of places that bank needs attention, uh, to where we can, uh, exercise the use of that grant money that's out there for demolition of those houses. The city's done that twice, I know in the last fif- last 15 years they've done that, must have been eight. In the last 15 years, they've done it twice, that used that grant to dispose of unwanted houses and different things. I think the last, the last round is about 18 houses, between 12 and 18.
We have about 30.
Yeah.
I've just been having a lot of people talk with.
Yeah, it's in the, it's, it all, it's all in the works. I mean, it's, uh.
I thought it was in the work.
It's like everything, it takes a little bit of time, but, uh, uh, it, it, all that's, that thing, you'll start seeing, hearing about them meeting and us putting it all finalized and put together to do what we need to do.
I guess something on road paving, uh, do we have a list for these things to go around?
Well, you know, I gave all y'all, we gave a list of every street and I highlighted the ones that we'd already did and kind of want you to go through and kind of go ahead and see what it is, but I think we need to, my opinion is we need to focus and, and, you know, the bad thing about paving is it makes people mad, you know, that, that's, when you pave, it actually makes people mad and, uh, I don't really understand that, I guess.
Even in my, my street, I would be.
They give, some gets mad because it wasn't, so to speak, their turn or their street didn't get paved and I, and it's, I try, I tell everybody that every street's on my list, I mean, and it is, it's not, you know, and I'm not, nobody's, uh, pushing for, I mean, ain't no, they ain't no way pushing any harder than anybody else per se, everybody's pushing to get the streets done and I explain to them, we try to spend, I think last year we spending the neighborhood of $300,000. We try to spend between two and $300,000 a year, close to it with the tax money that we're getting. We're getting the other 30, about 30, 35,000 this year with the new gas tax that's coming. We applied for a grant, we've applied for two different grants. One's a load of moderate income grant for, that could be used for paving. We, there's only certain places that we could use that and one of those places was Carter Estates. I don't think the finalized time's up on, it's getting close, it's not up, but we hadn't got a letter saying, we got it, haven't got a letter saying, we didn't get it on that grant, but we applied for this rebuild Alabama money. We was able to use that grant toward the Arrowhead, be able to pave the Arrowhead subdivision. Marion County didn't get a penny of that money. I think county I think got two jobs awarded to them, but I spoke with Tracy Estes again, Representative Estes on that again. He was assured by the governor's office that we would get some asphalt from that. There's six more rounds of that supposed to happen, six more through A-trip and different things, they're supposed to base some more money come from that and as he put it, they wanted to take care of the heavy lifters of getting that tax done and in place and started. They want to take care of who can be done the legwork at the start.
His was the first one.
Yeah, but he, he assured, he was assured, he assured us that we would get them on the front. That being said, I feel like that we need to focus hard and heavy in that neck of the woods up here on this barrier, barrier Cherokee Avenue and though, uh, and not on that, but we need to, we need to do some drainage. We need to try to, we could go ahead, I think, and go ahead and maybe do some drainage work ourselves too, because the development upstream or development uphill is causing a lot more water issues coming down, you know, and when we, when we adopt to take in a subdivision, we kind of somewhat take responsibility for it, I guess, but we did, even though we didn't engineer it, we didn't hire an engineer to, uh, a lot of, like, a lot of, most contractors or builders don't do like the railroad, they pay X amount of dollars to do a plant for 100 years for that, you know, which we probably plan for a two week flood because we get for less than 100 years, but we got any kind of development happening that, that makes the water shed faster, you can't get rid of it fast enough. Cover's not being big enough, ditch is not being deep enough or wide enough and probably the people to get flooded. But I think that's what we need to do is give an engineer and work on getting rid of some of this water that's coming through up here on Cherokee and, well, that, that look through there. I would like to see us focus on that more than anything first, first round this year.
That was my two major complaints, I guess, from groundwater drainage and streets.
Yep.
That current there Cherokee is not even backed right. That's why the water stays on the inside and it runs down the yard on the other side.
I believe it's blown the road out.
Yeah, right on down.
It's blown the road, what's that, what's the number that cut through the road there? I call that road that's behind the school, behind the elementary school.
Columbus Loop.
Columbus Loop, it's, it's blown out, it's, that cover's out.
They got it, they got it marked off, yeah, they got it blocked off.
Berry was out with it.
Yeah, that road, they got on that, that day or that evening or something and took care of that, that Columbus Loop is, they, that road blocked off. We gotta try to get that, we gotta get that covered and get that fixed and, and from, from Columbus going back east and we're coming back around the elementary school, we need, that, that need, that definitely needs some work done in there. So you go through there, does garbage truck go around through there? You come off, you come around behind the elementary school?
Yeah, I, I come off of Columbus Loop, turn left, come back out, get it cleaned.
Yeah. See, we got a garbage truck, two buses and all those people come through there, pick up the kids in the afternoon. That, that, that loads in terrible shape from, that will stretch right there, so maybe when we do, take, get focused and get somebody working on up in Arrowhead and up there on Cherokee that we might can get them to step down there and kick that road out. That's where all, where it comes, it's where it goes through at and it comes there and hits the creek below Todd and then floods the park. It floods Arrowhead first, floods that street and then floods the park before it finally hits the big body of water.
It floods that place, what floods Alabama?
It's a mess right through there, but, you know, I, I believe there's gonna be more development like that way, you know, there's, we need to go ahead and plan for place 15, there's, there's a lot of, what I call a lot of, lot of property there that's being developed that stands to be developed in the next five, 10 years, about those 15 acres I know for sale right up above, uh, in behind Chad Cotton, in behind Chad Cotton back toward 61, that makes 15, about 15, 18 acres right there that's for sale, that could, you know, that could change hands at any time and be developed and that's gonna cause more water problems. That, that's where I'm at, I'm kind of, I was gonna, we gonna get the other, kind of what I'm, I need to be focused, try to get some drainage issues straight out of there, which we got top of a lot of Hawkins. Actually met with him, I should, up there. We've got so many, we got a lot of projects going on, we've got a lot of grants that we've applied for going on and, um, they've got a sewer project, you know, well sewer and water filtration plant project going on with water forming, there's a lot going on and it kind of, we've got a lot of development running on in this end of town and some different things coming in and some other things, you know, that come at the interstate and different things that's kind of, it puts some of the other stuff, as far as engineer goes, on, you know, we're behind A-Ball a little bit on this, off this grant that we got, this half million dollar grant that we got on extending our industrial park drive around by Tiff and that's, that's, I talked with the engineers on that, now we're good with Kev and we was talking to him last week, we don't know what status was, but I felt like it ought to have been beat it last March and he would have already given this March, it's been a year later. He said the state had a few more, two more changes that they wanted to do to it. They assured me there wasn't no chance, not, not to worry about losing the money, but until we have it, it's done, I don't worry about losing the money.
He didn't give Tracy on that.
Yeah, he, I already have, we got it with him on Tracy's, was ready, prepared me a letter for that, uh, road that comes off going into, if we was able to get that grant, probably include the money to fix that road, but that didn't come through. But I think everybody's kind of a bit behind because of the weather, trying to get things done, but we, we've, we've got a lot going on and we need to make things happen as soon as the weather breaks. One thing I've got on old business is, uh, I'm leaving, which Gina might can, Gina might can speak on behalf of it, the, the lady that we hired to drive the, part-time drive the, like the, I'm not gonna call it MACOG bus, that, what we, what we, what we named that bus, what have we named that bus?
It's called the City Bus.
The what?
The City Bus.
The City Bus, y'all know the City Bus. The young lady that, that we hired to drive it was part-time, just got out of surgery and they kind of, I say they, Susan, I kind of thanks overseeing that pretty much, uh, Susan over there, and she's had to leave, she couldn't be here tonight, she had taken, she had, she got her supervisor involved in her something tonight, she couldn't be up here, but anyway, she had asked me to, she'd asked me, which I'd asked Todd, she'd asked me about somebody filling in for that, well, that was her surgery and then she added to it to fill in if there was ever a need again, so and I thought, well, you know, I could probably okay during the surgery, but I went right before y'all to okay if it's more than that when somebody's out and when she's out, when she can't do it, they need a backup and it's not gonna increase the amount of money that we're paying out, it just be a backup person that can, that can call it either way. We would probably need to do whatever kind of testing, uh, I feel we need to have, probably have whatever procedures we go through for us hiring, anybody, I think that person needs to be subject to those same standards as that we did for any other hire. But if they're okay with that, I'm okay with that, but have a backup person.
Does that need to be posted though?
Ma'am.
Do we need to post that or?
I don't think we have to post it. If y'all got a recommendation for somebody, cause y'all did through all that hiring process to start with. We was trying to get MACOG to pay their report of that, uh, which I'm still working on that other part of that, by the way, the fuel, they've been taking the other bus. They were supposed to have left that bus with us and they come picked it up and relocated it, but I'm digging that on the keys. Trying to think basically, that's, that's something else I had on old business. I always have a tendency to think of a million things after posting the agenda and I forget. Todd, I have to mention that you got a lead by no problem. Is anyone rest, y'all got any other business? Yeah, let me, y'all got a, each one y'all got printed out, that's one, shall see that here. I think we're okay on the other end, just we, that funds up to around $40,000 already. We can see how far we go with that, I know, you know, that kind of, kind of needing on what y'all thoughts or what y'all think about us, put, see if we can get some bids on that building, if somebody buying that building, this other building.
The settle building?
Yeah.
I think that'd be the best.
There you go, yeah. See if we can get more. See if we can get some, well, if you say, do you get a, what's your thoughts on it? He turned, he turned, that's from Heath Reed.
Whatever they decide, I mean, I would like to say, you know, if we could get, you know, some other bidders other than Mr. Reeves and, and Seig, because I do know that PD is busting out the seams over here and I think we really need to find him somewhere to go, but I mean, I understand this is a high now, but, you know.
I still, I believe, I believe in the near, real near, real near future from a, a contact that I've got, I believe that we'll, that we'll have another opportunity southwest of town to maybe relocate them, move to the police department. Kind of like, just kind of keep that down till we, you know, kind of try, trying to focus on which we know they, they're out, they've outgrown what they've got over there. How are we in here, Todd, for, during court day, have we outgrown?
I don't know where to go. Come back in chief's office, meet with, you know, folks and have to take all of them back to the police department and meet with them in there because I don't have anywhere to, that my granddaddy would say, I don't have anywhere to lie when I'm sitting down talking to folks and we generally got, you know, a room full, people standing out and hire all of them, have to hire for them.
But no, it's just, our group's full up here.
It's just, it's not a real good situation, it would be nice if we had more room for, something we can declare, you know, designated as municipal court system, build in our, you know, police department, municipal court building, would be really nice, be real, real nice.
Let's kind of, let's see how this, this plays out first time before this year, see how that works, but, wait, trying to run, you know, let's see what we can do, see if I might get some people, see if I might get some deals or see how we might need to try to move this building over here if we do that grant, I mean, if we, I know that, I know that if we don't, if we don't get anybody interested in, I'm, I'm almost that grant I was telling you about earlier, I'm, I know that we include that building in the demolition part of it, if that's what, if that's, if it comes to that, uh, you know, that's, that's an option if we can, uh, get somebody interested in. I'm sure it's a well-built, uh, the basement part of it, water issue that's in the basement wherever, I'm sure the structure's pretty sound, I mean, it's just like the building that the local person purchased down here, the, the old post office, that was an original post office.
I think it was the old post office, yeah.
That building.
Over at Crosswood Pond, so, yeah, that's what it was built for.
I was contacted about a price on demo and that, tearing it down and when they got to looking at how well the, the structure was built, they decided to go the other way and put it back in use. And, you know, that may be the something, that's why I'd like to maybe get some people to look, that might be interested, see if they can make something out of it, and I think we need to kind of, which we got a little time, which that grant, we've got to be applied to that, I think by the end of March, that's why I'm kind of pushing for the labor board to, let's get things up to par when we turn in that list and I've already requested paperwork from MACOG that we'll need to fill out on each structure.
Yeah, individually.
You have to, you have to clear it, you have to get okay from the, um, from the landowners that own it and it's a little bit of a process, but it's nothing that we can't do, but we need to not wait till the last minute to do it. Which we own that building, so it shouldn't be that much trouble if we decide that we want to add that building to the list, you know, here to do that. If you, if y'all okay with it, I kind of throw it out there and see maybe if we can get some offers on it or whatever. If not, we might go the other way, uh, get away with it. We discussed that last week on that, that whole house. I guess it's, I don't know, I've got, I've got nothing else, I've got, uh, which I'm gonna, we've got a, uh, let me bring this up too, cause it's getting, which Regina's not here to elaborate on that, but I don't know if I remember one, but last, I guess last summer, one of the units gone out at the library, that unit's still out, we've not done nothing with that unit, it was a 12, it was a, I don't know if it was, somebody might, I want to refresh my memory, it's a not ball size unit, it's between a 10 and a 12, I think it's a left on unit, the, the units that size are not, we need to go up a number or go down a number. I need, we're gonna have to, but the problem, the problem, let me just, we've got an issue there, we've got an issue here with this safe shelter, the safe house, safe building here of the unit, that unit, that unit will not have, which I was here, that unit has no air and it's always got some emergency heat, am I correct on that?
Yeah, it was designed, of course, to, where it's at, to protect it from the weather too, but it's really, it's not getting the breathe like it needs to.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the heating and cooling, neither one of them's working on it already.
He got, the heat working the other day, but he thinks the pressure's on, start, if the air work when it gets warm, I don't know what his point is.
He, he believes that he, I've had Davis come look at it, Chris Davis, he believes the biggest problem that is because it's enclosed, it can't get the air that it needs to keep it, the unit itself cold, and he believes that unit needs to be put outside. First, he didn't think he could get it on you like that, but they, your, your, I think knowledge of training, training like it is, it's got a unit, he can get the unit to keep the inside. If he changes it and puts it outside, he'll have to change both components, the inside and the outside. It's gonna be, it's gonna be under $15,000. The other one at the library will probably be under $15,000. The problem you have on these heating and coolants is, is we, most of the time that we bid something, we like for it to be an engineer-designed bid sheet, where everybody's like, when we do a bank loan, we put it out there, we want you to put this amount of lunch with this amount of honey, you know what I'm saying, everybody's bidding on the same thing. And if, if you don't specify the amount of sears, the amount of tonnage, if you don't put all that in, it's hard, it's hard for me to get somebody to come up here and give a price. They don't want to give you a price and then you come out here and say, this is what so and so lobbyed it, you know what I'm saying, they don't want, they don't want dirt pies out there for somebody else to chop at.
What did we ask, how about Tyler, did that on the library for?
We asked if that was all, we asked for, what everybody needed.
They changed for an empty, so she grants, we applied for, which is a scout, but, and we don't qualify anymore, so we found out on the grant.
Yeah, I, I thought there was a reason that my part couldn't be involved in it on that one. Tried to sit about the gas district, see what we could do for this gas district, but it's not a gas, it's electric.
Well, none of it's gas, obviously electric, I think.
Library.
Yeah, it's a piece of gas.
What the inside parts are gas, because the one outside, I think, come back later.
Yes.
One of each, yeah.
We're gonna have to, as bad as we hate to, because that's, that's what I call profit, but, you know, it's, it's money that we, and the budget is, you know, for, it's money that we, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta fix them. And we've got issue across the road, that theater, but I've told Mary that's something they got. And to beat it off, she calls me this morning and said the heat wouldn't come on up here. And I'm like, my, my, what? And Chris had to come up here and he wouldn't tell her what he done, he told the family going back. And I said, I believe a burger he tripped or something, you know, but Mike, I think we have checked that. I don't know what he did, but he got them going, we got a heat here today, just morning we didn't have it.
But he wouldn't tell you what he done.
He didn't tell her, he might tell me, he might tell me I'll pay if he sends a bill for it. But we haven't, but now the library, I think it's eighteen year old, I think it's about eighteen year old. It's not something that was done last year and got to be redone. And this unit, this system that's over here, um, that was built, where was it?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, so it's probably about ten, twelve year, ten, eleven year old. I need to kind of, I guess my question now is, is do, do you want me to try to get an engineer to get us a bid sheet together? Or do you want to use somebody local? I asked Todd if we want to get local, I think, under fifteen thousand, we can get three local bids. We can tell them what we want, I can tell them what we're looking at, what we want to do and get three bids. How do you find, my, my question is how y'all want handling it? I mean, it's not like my unit at home, I cause them to come fix it, but we gotta do it the right way. I mean, I, you know, I just, I want Todd to kind of give a little bit of advice out of handling it, but we got issues to report.
Well, you don't technically have to bid, but you could just simply do what we did with some of our smaller issues, just ask for around two or three folks and let them give you a price. You don't officially have to formally bid under that limit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they need to know what to bid on.
Yeah, well, we, we just need a price on.
If we want a ten, sir, about at the library, I would just get a price on the ten, I mean, I just ask them two, three or anything.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just, just don't get real specific other than the size unit you need.
I think we did that, I think you asked the last time about whenever we had, I think we had two or three of them.
I think I did, yeah.
And we ended up, we ended up not necessarily taking the lowest one because we, as I find out, if I'm mistaken, we ended up, because of the certain unit that it was and the warranty and, and repair and replacement stuff that they offered, we ended up going with that. Which technically wasn't the lowest one at the time, but it was the one we felt was the best.
The library we did at the park.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a different, that was a whole different.
Yeah.
Ballgame, the way we handled it at the park. And I think more of what happened on this up here at the library is we went to try to get assistance from the power company or gas company and it kind of fell through the cracks and let it go. But I, it's, it's something I think that we don't need to go ahead and address, I need to try to get it, uh, get it fixed, get it fixed. Uh, I could, I could, I can do that, I can, uh.
The gas, the gas is very neat, right? Our best that I've played, that's pretty neat. The gas packs inside there.
I think there's four in that room back there, two newer than the other, I'm not sure how it'd be.
But it's the air that's what's bad outside. Because out here at the library, because wasn't there some kind of?
We got heat problems up there, don't we? We got, we got a heat, we got one complete unit that's messed up. So what, wasn't there something bad in there? They had to be, they weren't compatible, wasn't, wasn't there a re, wasn't there a?
They said something about it, not being backward going or something.
Yeah, that they had to be, you had to be compatible, so that's what we was, right?
I think that's right.
I mean, they just give us prices.
Make it compatible.
Yeah. So we don't think they'll even hear. So you want me to try to see what I come up with on pick, get the price and get doing both of them, because we don't need this.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think, I think we need to go give energy a bit, I mean, more, we don't need to get.
You, you'd be surprised, Alan, I'll attest to it, this gets used pretty good bid on the stormy weather, doesn't it?
I estimate, uh, the last side of it, that was around the heat was out pretty cool in there. There was, there was probably sixty, seventy people in there that day. I've seen more than that here.
They get there early and stay late.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing is we need to go. Every time I come by, there looks like two, three hundreds standing outside.
Isn't it the first one there gets to get the remote control? Like that's the rules, I got, the first one there gets the remote.
I got one in the basement. I don't want it all, but it's good.
He was saying the whole smile.
Park lot here on the street to the door of that place.
There's one that's on the other side, there's one that goes up.
Stops at the end with here by the. You're not a good.
People park.
We got a park, have we got a parking issue, have we got a, an issue of how they can get up there when there's, because people are parking in that alley when there's a storm coming. We got a sidewalk issue from here to there.
I get that parked over here in this, in this parking lot.
That park, the city hall parking lot, can they get to that?
I mean, they can if they walk around that way, but it's.
Up the street, but if something's in the street, parked in the street, they're gonna have trouble.
Yeah, they have a problem, yes.
Because usually there's several handicapped people that's going in on you. A time or two that I've been up there, there's a lot of handicapped people.
I, I, it's got some bad, but I have tried to get my guys to go up there and it starts getting, when you start seeing them come in and direct have it parked, because they'll, they'll park long ways and.
If everybody tries to get to the door, don't they?
Yes, I mean, basically this park area, they stop.
You only had to make Jim in the back.
I stay at home, I get away.
I've been bringing it to hell, I've had to sign a brief. One time I, Allison, I come up here, Allison up here, and I, you had some officers that come up here, that was off duty. But, and they were working, they were trying to direct traffic and all that, and one of them wasn't his police car. My personal opinion, in my opinion, is I think that they ought to come in the police car, even with bringing their families, so in case we do have a disaster, they got their car here. If they need to leave, I don't think they need to leave their car at home if it's, if they're predicting a tornado.
So what you're saying is?
What I was saying is they need to load their families up and bring their patrol car, so, because if they ain't some way that they can't get back, because when we get, we was with it, we went to Hackleburg. And it's, they need to be, they need to be in there.
What, what, I think what you're telling me is though they were off duty.
They was off duty.
But what, what, even what you're saying is if it gonna come, come prepared or don't come at all.
Right, because, but this guy was off. This guy was off duty and he was out there working that parking lot. And he was in there and he was in the street clothes, but he done, he was doing his job in the street clothes and he didn't have his police car. And because he was talking about if he had his police car, he could turn the lights on and sort of get people's attention and, and he was, there was so many people up there, this was flooding out. And he was up there trying to park them and help them and so, so that's why.
If you, if you can Brett, on a, on a situation like that, if you, they're, they're off, he wants to authorize you overtime, if those guys can, you know, if they're willing to work overtime to help in those situations, probably to, you know, where they could come prepared in case the worst happened.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that, I mean, that.
Well, I mean, you.
I mean, I'm serious though, that's, that's kind of what we're talking about.
I think if we have, if a tornado, I mean, if it's bad, if, if you call them out, I'm sure if it was to be a disaster, but I think they're gonna be kind of prepared if they're here.
I didn't, I didn't know that, I, I would have, I would have actually told them to have their car if they were, if they were here.
But I mean, I respected the boy for what he did, I mean, he, he can actually be doing what he's doing.
Oh, yeah, 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 I completely understand, but, um, I put them on call anytime they're drinking the weather, twenty-four hours prior to, just so I know they're gonna be there and they're not. So they're on, on standby.
So you got an idea who you could depend on?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that it, to me, on an emergency, I mean, how often do you have that?
Very seldom, I hope not very much at all.
Me too.
I worked eight months up there. They owe me nothing, I guarantee them. I don't wish that on them.
But I mean, that was, I'm just saying.
And I'm telling you, we, we need to thank the Lord every day because we, it goes around, it goes down through younger and it come around through younger. We sitting right here where it don't, but that's not saying the next one may not come.
Sure. Well, I mean.
How?
If it's coming, I mean, so they can walk around.
I'll look at that, I don't, but if he's got people to help, you know, it's, the issue is handicapped, a lot of them, you bring their animals, they, we've had problems with animals being in there, you know, a lot of people don't like animals. You know, it's like somebody might smoke, don't need to burn or smoke, you know, different, but it, it's a safe, we don't have anybody other than Alan, I think, in the police department. I think Alan's, Alan's group, the fire department pretty much oversees that during all those times that you, pretty much, right?
We do, we try to open it up, slow it back down and I'll check on people, but I was asked today, I think we brought it up at one time. We had somebody designated to oversee not just the outsides for parking, but just somebody there to oversee it. Uh, and I was up there most of the day, that Saturday with the heat pump and stuff and kept, I went by there, discovered that, that's why I found out it was cold in there, just go check on people. But Corin and Brett knows, Corin, what goes on, if we start getting wind damage and whatnot, I can't promise that I've got somebody that I can keep there.
Because you may have to pull them out in a rescue situation or something, same way with Brett, he might need them at a road closure, road blockage or something, and I understand what you're saying, I don't, I don't really know. How, who, I need to try to, and I have a volunteer, James, what you doing? Something's coming from the volunteer. Yeah, it'd be good, I think, you know, I'll wait a time or two.
Pretty still total poop, but what?
Angie, I think, might be, we'll shoot it up out, but we might take turns, next door is yours.
I mean, I, I'm taking that picture, you said.
Oh, yeah? And I, and all honesty, I think there needs to be one, which I need, we need to try to get an EMA, and I have talked with the EMA and I have talked with Tracy when, right before Tracy went in, we need one up here in that, in, in behind, across from the post office, in behind those, uh, houses, authority buildings up here.
That'd be a good idea.
I mean, those, I know all those people are not coming down here. How many residents, there's several residents up there. And it, and there's a lot of, how, there's a lot of beds in there, I've called it, you know, there's a lot of people living right there across from that post office. And they've got room to put one in there, there's room in between that back, that whole backyard open and behind them.
Well, a lot of those folks there too have a hard time getting down here, so they just, they just kind of hunk down there where they're at. We try to go by, check on them during and after, you know, because that's what we know they're gonna be, they're just, they've already told us and I won't leave. They just can't make it down to this.
Like a tornado, I mean, come, you got, what, three officers in that?
Yes, sir.
That's not gonna get there, I mean, your three people can't handle it.
I'm glad to know he's got them all, he gets even, it's depending on whether, he's got them all, he's got a list who's on, ready to go.
But I feel like it should be his collar, he needs to pick any back.
Yeah.
It's his collar, he needs them, he can get them.
Uh, next, thank Todd, I hope, make sure, you know, we, we talked about it, we've had, uh, a lot of, several different people over the years complaining about the water in our head, that's coming in our head and it just, it's get, it's not gonna get no better, but we've not done anything to fix it. If nothing else, we've done enough to make it worse. Right there, when you first come in, what, what lives up on the hill? It lives in that first house on the hill on the right. You know, I'm talking about the first house, on the, you first go in the first house on the right and you go beside it and you go up the hill and there's that house, yeah.
That cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that cul-de-sac.
First cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that is.
But then back behind Tracy, Tracy's house, right back in there behind Tracy's house.
That's, that's, that ditch runs under that cul-de-sac. In your, in your opinion, is that the city's responsibility to, the right size covert to be in that cul-de-sac now that, I mean, I own it, I own it, to know that we have the authority or need to take responsibility. I need to know that we need to take responsibility to make sure that water gets, in that covert, out that covert there or, or how much, what kind of lead, what kind of room have we got that we can work in there? I guess is what I'm saying, because that ditch runs behind that house.
Yeah. That's our street. What you're telling me is the culvert that runs under there needs to be larger. It needs to be larger.
Needs to be more.
It needs to be two to like, if there's not room to raise it. We put another, I think, we take care of it.
Is it, is it, when it does that, is it running across the road?
Running in front of the house, it should go behind it, it runs over it and it goes into that house and it should go behind it.
And that's, that's being created because the culvert that we currently have.
And a lot of stuff.
Will not have the water.
The first line stops it up, the second line is too much.
Well, you know, we've had about six hundred year flood events in the last six months. Why they call them hundred year events, because we had six in six moments.
That river was supposed to be for a hundred year flood, it's got, it's gotten them, uh, uh, it's gotten them a quarter, outside a quarter of its capacity being pulled.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, I would think that we can do that if it's, if, if that's our street and if engineers say that that culvert's undersized and won't let the water, won't carry the water off, which is causing this problem. You know, we went, we went through that several years ago, the issue of metal, we didn't necessarily think it was our responsibility, but the court thought so do I. So, I mean, I just think that that's, yeah, that's something that we can do, that probably we should do.
Okay. I'm saying on the water issue, the, still we've got issue right here going in the shadow. They don't one way in there and one way out, I mean, and that house on the hill, I don't think it's gonna be, I know it's not gonna be no easy option to go by the house to get in and out. Which the landowner that joins that property right there where it goes in, it already okay, doesn't put a cover there while that was being repaired. I, I don't think it'd take too many more seasons like we've had this last time to knock that one out. I mean, I believe it'd take it, I believe, I believe that we don't see that go. And I think we need to address that in the very near future and fix it. Especially if we need to get out, get somebody out. And if it goes out and it happens to be a tornado, it's not gonna be good. You know, it needs to be, I know it's a chunk of change. We've got, we've got a lot of things that we want to do, things we need, I think we're gonna need to put that, those road issues. Part, I mean, we're gonna need to spend a little money getting, taking them to do what we gotta do to fix them. And I'm trying to see if there's some money out there to get assistance from the government on it. I mean, I think y'all will be on board with me if we can find any kind of money like that. It's got a little bit of magic to do it. Basically, I said something about doing a bridge over. Basically, the way they do bridges now is, is same thing, do a concrete cover.
And it's been concrete.
We may have to have a little bit of assistance from the water department because that sewer line. That's, I think that's, that is one of the biggest problems just going to get fixed.
Well, Larry, I will say that that's, that's one of the reasons, and you might want to reiterate this, that's one of the reasons why we're a little bit more specific about when we, what condition the road is in, when we accept the road. For a subdivision because we, in the past, we've always just, we wanted rooftops, we wanted this, we wanted that. So in the city, so we just, we needed them, but we did it. But.
Kind of tighten up.
You gotta tighten up a little bit on roads and drainage because that, that's, that's, that, once we take that road, that falls back on us. So when we're, when we're telling folks, you need to do this, you need to do that, you gotta get this done before we can accept that dedication. This is why. And that's just, that's important. This is why. Because it creates problems. And, you know, that's, it's a good problem. Development's a good problem, you know, but it does create problems that we have to deal with. So when we ask you to go a little step further, that's, that's why. It's not because we're being.
And you know, like you've done, you know, a lot, a lot of times it's hard to get paid on the town. We inherited, a lot of times we, each, each administration inherits problems. You know, that happened years ago. Long, but if it's a problem just derived from advancement and moving city forward, it's a good problem, in my opinion. It's just we're gonna have to address it and take care of it. I guess that's pretty much those things. I think council is kind of on board with me to maybe see what I can get started going forward, getting some money built with these projects, getting these drains and covers and stuff. It's everybody, you know, everybody, I'm sure y'all get calls on it. We used to have a problem over there in Meadowwood. Right there at where your house is now, is that still a problem or is that water getting out there now?
Getting out.
It's coming. It's in front of my, it's in my front yard.
And Todd, remember, y'all may not.
Yeah, I do.
But when the gateway, when they did this shopping center up here, that gateway over here. We still have an issue there going south, trying to get toward the railroad where it goes down through there. That's, that's an issue. You know, but, um, I don't, I don't, you know, I, I always tell people, you know, I'm glad you called and told me, you know, but I want to tell you, it's the biggest problem, the number one problem, money.
Oh, yes.
You know, having money to do it with.
Well, we got all of it, everything in Meadowwood's engineered already, right?
I believe we're good with it.
Yeah.
I, I believe, I believe we're good everywhere. I say everywhere. I believe we're satisfactory everywhere. The biggest problem on us there is in there.
Yeah. Well, that, that coverage you done made. I think, what about that cover turn by that, that goes into? It's like, I don't want you to say the city's bad dirt road. That, when you come out in behind those roofs and then there's Tracy's, you know, that other, you know, that cover right there? You know, we're talking about Chad Cocksey coming down through there, getting flooded right there.
Going over the road, yes.
Yeah, that's a little, that's a little bitty cover there. One day it was coming over the road there. And that's, that's just right up there. Right up through there. So if you open that up, what's that gonna do to that? Is it gonna let it out?
That's why I'd like the water person to kind of give me the idea of what we need to do instead of, I can tell you, I'm watching, see how water run. No, but you gotta do measurements, kind of see how much water's coming down there.
It's coming from all three directions with that one right there. We hit about that deep one day in the road.
It's gonna take a little bit of, that's another thing we'll have to address when we get to it, Todd, but it's gonna take a little bit of landowner in agreement to, oh, clean the ditch out, you know, get in the ditches. But it's on, it's gonna be on some land. Um, I guess that's all I got. Nobody else got any other business. I need to ask for a motion to pay the bill. Motion. So all in favor? Brett on? Can I, I'm, I'm gonna bring up something real quick, like two things in the police department. Brett's had a big play last week. Brett, his department had a pretty big deal of stuff going on. And during the midst of all of it, Apost, everybody knows what Apost did. Apost come in for an audit, an Apost audit in his department. Tell them, tell them what all that, what, what, what your grade was.
He said if he could give us a new merit grade, it'd be a hundred.
That's good.
That gun's real good.
That's great.
With Apost certification that passed. You know, it's kind of, I wouldn't put it hard as extreme as health department coming in. You know, health department always comes in the restaurant, seems like during lunch when everything's chaotic, you know, and that's kind of how it hit him last week when Apost come with all the stuff that he had going on. But I think we need to commend his department, the way they handle that department getting the certification and being scored that high, picking it scoring. Like you said, a lot of our police department, their police department's perspective in town and is doing good leadership and good people in the department. Same way with our department. We've got, we've got good departments on those end. I'm not leaving by out. You gotta do. He just got scored this past week and I just recognize that. But we got, if you remember, we did the, I'm gonna bring this up real quick, like we'd be kind of thinking about it. Uh, we've, we've had very, 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 very minimal repair bills on, at least on the police corps. The first, the first year that I've come in, we were constantly, had no kind of vics and different things. So we made the decision to do, did we do five? We did five at one time. And they're paying us, it was kind of sort of like if we was doing one and then doing the other and whatever. That's about to, those, those, first, those five is about to, they're about to pay off, aren't they?
Twenty-one. Late of twenty-one, those five police runs out.
It'd be, it'd be, and I'd like for y'all to be in consideration of just doing five again and get rid of the, the, the five that he's got. Cause he's still got some of the old ones out there and off on wood. Biggest problem about, I think, the deer in there now and different things.
They're going back to chargers, aren't they, Brett?
Sir?
They're going back to chargers, aren't they?
We're not.
You're not? Okay. I hope. Highway patrol is.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. And I, and I say that, I don't mean, I'd have to do some more research, but I know the frontline chargers we got, got to send us some money. And I think it was because they weren't, they really didn't know how and what they needed to do as far as a pursuit package. And from my understanding, the state's done some research and they made some updates on that. So I, 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 I'm not gonna say that. But the first charges we had.
I'm on him to be kind of.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think man thinks the state could, but I didn't know if they did every time. Probably what's important is the fact that a bid, you're talking about like the bid, the government pricing, they made certain models.
No, it was something about the rollover.
Tug of the, tug of.
Yeah. We've had good.
Police kind of get the over living, like the smaller.
They've had a good look at it and explored it.
Yeah, they have. Once we, uh, they were all wheel drive and we found out that you had to rotate every other, every other oil change. Or there's something in the exhaust system that would, that would go bad. And that was just a, I mean, that just, we figured that out pretty quick. But yeah, the guys are in line.
I guess that's all I got. I need to ask for a motion to adjourn. Um, all in favor? No, thanks.